Okay, Nicole, are we recording? All right, this is a regular meeting of the Ocean Shores Airport Development and Operating Committee. It is November twenty second, one o'clock in the afternoon, and we are meeting in the Ocean Shores Library. Let's do a quick roll call here, and then we'll get into the agenda. Bill Capron.
Here.
Jerry Divas.
Here on Zoom.
Ron DeBoer. Stuart.
I'm here.
And I'm here. All right, so everybody's here, hundred percent. Okay.
State your name for the record.
Richard Sires.
Where's the airport manager?
Not present.
The airport manager isn't present. All right. Okay, I've got, I'm just gonna run through a few things here that I want to talk about. And then we'll go through them in a little bit more detail. Just a few items that I want to touch on here to make sure that we don't have any issues outstanding. Want to talk about the windsock, want to talk about the beacon, want to talk about the camera, the poppy, the pilot control lighting, the airport weeds, the apron weeds, just a quick discussion, one minute on each of those. I want to talk about the ADS-B receiver that's going in. And then I want to talk about the AWAS that is going to be, that's slated for going in next year. And lastly, I want to talk about the lessons learned from our airport appreciation days. Jot down a few notes on that, and specifically where that file is gonna live. So why don't we, why don't we take the big one first? And then all the other stuff will follow after it, the big one being our airport appreciation days. And what I wanted to do mainly was just a quick recap on what your guys' thoughts were on things we did right, things that we could improve on for next year. So I guess I could take, I'll take it first. I think that for next year, we need to keep a list of attendees. I can take the action to to come up with a list that will be kept in our, in our appreciation days file.
You mean like a sign-in log?
No, no, just so that when we do it again this year or next year, we will know who attended, who didn't attend, because I know there were a couple of people that we wanted to to come here who didn't like the skydivers.
Okay, yeah, when you say attendees, you mean like presenters at the?
Presenters, yeah, like Ed Duncan.
Yeah. The car show guys, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Not necessarily who the, who the, the people were that you wanted.
No, not the people, the organizations.
All right.
So that we, we know who was here and who, who wouldn't or couldn't. So.
We want a vendor participant list.
Yeah, vendor participant list, yeah. I also thought that the cone line that we had set up was a good idea, I thought that worked. The RC flyers, I, I don't think that we had any conflicts there. We did have the two-way radios, and they were useful for when the chopper came in.
Yep.
What else? We had the two food trucks, lots of cars. Oh, the banner, the banner that was attached up to the tangerine fence, that was rolled up, and I think it was put in the airport lounge. So that's where that lives.
I don't know, I haven't been in the lounge since then.
Yeah, I think it is, yeah.
We want to store that kind of stuff in my hangar. I'm more than happy to put a corner, I got a little office in my hangar, I'm more than happy to dedicate some space to that, the things that we don't want to just be left out in the airport lounge.
Okay, well, thanks, thanks, Bill, that's, that's definitely an option. Okay. I'll put you down as storing the banner. There was one thing that didn't go very well, if I remember, we were putting up those those easels that had the pictures on them, the wind kept blowing them off, you remember that?
Sure did.
Yeah. So, you know, for next time, better easels or some more sturdy eclipse.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe a storyboard on plywood that can be attached to the kiosk out front, or
Yeah.
Something more secure.
Ron, can you think of anything?
I wasn't there, I was out of town, so I.
Oh, okay, all right.
Parking, we ran out of parking, which surprised me, but then when I look back at it, most, a huge percentage of the parking out there was taken up by us, people that were presenting or involved with it or something like that.
That's a good point.
So we should set an area inside the gate where we can park, maybe down at the, at the end of the fourth hangar now, we just park a row of cars out there.
Yeah.
In an east-to-west line there, and that way we have, we have our vehicles out of the way, and then vehicles for people that we don't want driving inside the gate. We started to make it for excess parking, we were guiding them down through the gate to the north end of the airport, and it worked, but it took, it took an escort to walk them down, and, and I, I just didn't like that. It was a solution at the time, but we, we definitely need to plan better for that, for this next year.
If it was any kind of luck, it'll actually be so many attendees that that parking on the airport, we get overwhelmed anyway.
Well, yeah, so.
You gotta send it over to the park across the street.
Where did the public park?
Yeah, they parked out front in that, the small area on the other side of the fence. And then didn't we?
Yeah, the park, it's far enough walk, people probably wouldn't do that, they just, yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll come back later, and then they don't, so. So, but I think, like I said, I think of the available parking, I think more than half of it was taken up by people directly involved with the
You're right.
With the van.
All parked.
Yeah, we should have parked inside on the grass. I think just moving, we really didn't end up with that many people coming through the gate, and I think just putting vehicles of people directly involved, if we could just put those inside the gate out of the way, I think that will solve that problem.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, you know, another thing I noticed too was in the, the area in front of the, the hangers where Jerry, didn't you have your, you wheeled your airplane out?
I did wheel it out, yeah.
Yeah, we had that on display, but it had to go through all that puncture weed. You know, there's, there's a ton of puncture weed out there.
Oh, it's horrible out there.
Yeah, where the, the food trucks were parking, people had to walk on that stuff. You know, if we could somehow get all that puncture weed out from in front of the hangers, the only way to get rid of that is to pull it.
Okay, so it takes a, it takes a crew of five guys to just walk in a row and pull them all out, and come back in a month and do it again, and at one point I had it from my hangar all the way to the main pad completely free of, you call it puncture weed, I call it sand burrs, but I had it completely free of that, but then it takes one city truck or the lawnmower to drive through there and deposit more spores, and then it starts up again, so.
Yeah.
The other thing that gets rid of it is thick grass, so, which involves water, it's actually a desert plant. It needs, it needs to dry out to grow the spores, which are the seeds to spread, so if you can keep it from drying out, then it doesn't go to seed, and then it, it goes away, but thick grass keeps the seeds from hitting the ground, and I know all this from experience, because I bought two vacant lots in Ocean Shores and built a house on them, and, and there's no sand burrs in my yard, but it took me five years to get rid of them, so, and you just have to stand top it in front of Jerry's hangar, it's just full of them, but
Yeah.
Dan Murphy used to, he'd bring some chemistry from Nebraska to spray it out there, and thinking that'd get rid of them, well, it killed them, but its last dying throes, they'd go to seed, and then, so they just spit all these seeds everywhere, and so his area is really infested, and it, it just takes, you know, you need a shovel, and I rake them up, and when they're really thick, if you rake them up really well, and then you mow them right to the quick, with a bag, you have to bag it so you get the seeds and everything.
Yeah.
And then that'll get rid of most of it, and you just have to stay at it and keep coming at it. It's, it's.
Can't just have a controlled burn?
That doesn't work either, that doesn't work either.
No, no, you're taking it inside, you're thinking, not next to my hangar.
You have to, you just have to keep pulling them, is what it comes down to.
All right, well, I'm gonna make a note that you know, three, four months before the next one, we need to get a work crew out there a couple of times to, you know, do what we can to.
You know, I mean, I work it, when I'm out here, I always walk it, pull a five-gallon bucket every time I'm out here. Sometimes I pull a five-gallon bucket full of those things in fifteen minutes, and sometimes it takes me an hour to find that many, but, but they're out there, and what we should do is get the city council to pass an ordinance, illegal to have them, see, and then Jerry will have to go out and dig them out in front of his house, so he doesn't get, in front of his hangar, so it doesn't get sighted for it, see? So.
I, I do work on mine. And, and I have pretty good luck, you know, one, one more way that, that works for me, digging them is, is ultimate, but this time of year, and when you can identify them before they have seeds, you can spray them with a weed-be-go-on is, is what I use, and, and then I just wait until they, they die, and then I pull them up and put them in a bucket and haul them out. But if, if you do wait until they're, they have seeds on them, then yeah, they're gonna go all over the place.
Yep. So when you're saying the seeds, you're talking those little crown-shaped thorn-bur things?
Yeah, those sticks, stick in your, it sticks in your finger, and you can feel it there for three days.
Oh, they're horrible.
But you can't see it.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I call them goat heads, I guess some people do, because if you look at them real close, they look like a goat head.
They call them that.
But, but they are, they are, they, they are considered a noxious weed. And they are supposed to be controlled. They're all over, they're all over on the airport, and when I drive my truck out there from the, from the tarmac to my hangar when they're seeding, oh my God, it's, it's, they're, they're everywhere in my tires. I'm afraid to drive home.
The best time of year to do this is you fertilize the grass at the airport, and then the rain will, will get it all growing, and and in the spring, it'll come in pretty good, and that chokes them out pretty well, but.
All right, well, I'll, I'll put that in the, in the list of lessons learned. So anyway, regarding our, our lessons learned for the, for the appreciation days, my, my, I, I picture it as this way, that will, the, the file would, would contain a listing of these notes that we've just discussed, it would also contain the the safety plan that we all arrived at, and it would contain the map, the aerial map, showing the location of where everybody's gotta be. So all of that can exist digitally, and it should exist, I think, in the meeting minutes. So if everybody agrees, I can compile all of this stuff, and then somehow, maybe with Nicole, we can figure out how to get the Word document and some PDFs to exist in the meeting minutes, so that next year, we can just come back to the minutes, bang, it's all right there. So it's not living on my computer at home, it is in the city's possession.
Yeah, it should be there, yeah.
Well, we already have, I mean, we have the map and the safety plan.
Okay.
As part of the special event vermin.
Okay.
So that's already compiled all in one document.
Yeah.
At the city level.
Okay, excellent, well.
If you wanted to just give me your list.
Okay, I'll put together a, a Word compilation of everything we just spoken about. So that's an actual.
No, I'll, I'll actually make a copy of it and put it in our there's, we have a folder for the airport committee, so I'll put it in the airport committee.
Okay.
The folder on the computer.
On the network. Accessible by all city computers.
It's not in the file drawer somewhere.
No.
It's on that, it's on that computer that, that computer that wouldn't update to Windows eleven.
How storage updated it would be.
All right, well, anything else on appreciation days when we go switch gears?
Overall, I think it went really well, one comment I got from a pilot coming in is, he'd been using the, the camera that's on the edge of the the pilot's lounge building.
Yeah.
And if you pull up that camera, you pulled up on, I pulled up on my iPad before I leave Renton, and halfway here, I pull it up again. That tells me everything I need to know about weather here, tells me wind direction and speed, it tells me how visibility, tells everything I need to know, we said, well, the food trucks backed in and blocked the camera from looking across the bay, so. So, he says, so, you know, if, if you could maybe back them up further or not as far, something said the camera could still see across, that was his only comment. So, and I thought, yeah, that's a good idea, I can do that.
All right. I'll put that just down as trucks block.
iPad from your airplane?
Yeah, I caught that one too.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I can make phone calls through my Bluetooth and headset. Half the time, sometimes just out of range. Okay, let's move on to so I can tell the wind's out of south pretty strong, but the visibility's not so great, I can't see across. Let's move on to the AWAS and ASOS, and the reason that I wanted to bring this up was I noticed in, this is going back to no, it was attached to the the agenda from our June twenty-first meeting, it was the the plan through Century West for next year, twenty twenty-five, and slated for twenty twenty-five is install AWAS Phase One. And in twenty twenty-six, install AWAS Phase Two. So I don't think anybody's gonna complain about that, if you've got an AWAS coming in here, that's great. I did have to go in and remind myself on what the difference is between an AWAS and an ASOS. Anybody interested?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I'm going back to ground school now, that was a while ago. AWAS, there's three flavors, one, two, and three, we're getting AWAS Three, I think we are. The difference is the amount of data that they transmit out. AWAS One has altitude, wind, temperature and dew point, density altitude. AWAS Two has all of that plus visibility. AWAS Three has everything that AWAS Two has plus clouds and ceiling. So that, that should be pretty good. ASOS, Automated Surface Observation System, is owned by the, AWAS is owned by the FAA, and it updates by the minute. ASOS is owned by the National Weather Service, and it updates hourly. ASOS is a little bit more comprehensive than AWAS. Every hour, it gives you everything that AWAS gives you, plus precipitation type, and sometimes runway condition, braking condition. Anyway, we're getting AWAS Three, which is a heck of a lot better than what we got now, which is nothing.
No, we got a camera.
Set the camera. Yeah.
The camera gives me, well, it doesn't give me a temperature, but I can tell if it's snow or rain, so.
And, and it, and it shows the sop as well.
Yeah, so.
But on the other hand, you know, if you can't get that in flight, and you know how, you know, the weather changes around here by the second. So, you know, you can pull up the AWAS, and I imagine that once it is installed, it's gonna get its own backup generator. It will have its own frequency, of course. So, yeah, looking forward to that.
Yeah.
So it's gonna have its very own backup generator, or we'll have, well, the backup generator for the whole.
Well, let me go to the only source that I have here, which is from Century West.
I personally think a backup generator is a waste of money. When the weather's so bad, the power's out. Or, you know, the way, the power could go out, take three days to come back on, and the weather's fine, so.
Well, install, for next year, it's analysis and site selection.
That's the whole project for next year?
Yeah, and twenty twenty-six is Phase Two construction.
Well, I, I suggest that the backup generator be for the whole airport, so that we would have not only the AWAS working, but the pilot control lighting, the Pappy, and the beacon.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know where I read that, something about the, the generator, I know I saw it, it was in here somewhere.
Although I'm sure that Century West will be well on top of it.
And my other suggestion is that it be a propane-powered generator, because gasoline, you know, goes bad after not too long a period of time, and diesel goes a little bit longer. Oh, goes faster?
I think it goes bad faster.
Okay. But propane doesn't.
The only disadvantage to propane is if you run out of gasoline, you can go get a bucket full of it, and if you run out of propane, it's, you need a pressure truck to deliver it.
Yeah. But the natural gas folks out here, or the propane folks out here are pretty good about getting through to deliver it.
Yeah. Propane's expensive.
For the amount that would actually be used, it's never.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Oh, I say, I don't think it's gonna be running all that long if we had a large enough tank, and, you know, had the service on it check maybe four times a year, I, I think propane would be fine.
Yeah, you'd wanna size the tank for a, I don't know, a two-day use maybe, but
Nicole, could we, since Scott isn't here, and action items always go to the person who isn't here, and, and he is the airport manager, could we have him ask Century West, is there gonna be a backup generator for our upcoming AWAS? And if so, could we have that generator located so that it can back up the poppy, the beacon?
The whole airport.
The whole airport. I would think that Century West would do that, but let's just plant the seed now.
The generator's been on the list for a lot of years.
And we can actually have a really, pretty large propane tank sited out there. Or if we perceive that one tank couldn't be large enough to handle, we can have two smaller tanks.
Yeah.
To cascade it.
Yeah, thousand gallons lasts a long time. I don't know, you know, you have to calculate the, you have to calculate how much it's gonna use over a you know, the storm comes through, and then the generator comes on, and then it's gonna be used for two days, you know, you think the power come back on in less than two days, but.
Well, I shouldn't have asked, or does?
Well, I've seen eight days too, but, but you can't go to five nuns, you know, I mean, so.
So, all right, so I guess, any other discussion on the, on the AWAS?
I'm glad it's getting close.
Yeah, well, site selection is next year, according to Century West.
Selection and design?
Yeah.
I assume we're accumulating our stipend
Or FAA money?
I don't know, I have looked at where the money comes from for the airport and where it gets dispersed, and it's pretty complicated.
The airport manager usually gives us an update on that.
Yeah.
He's not here.
Well, I don't, all of these large expenditures in the last couple of years, so I would assume that.
No, no, the last one we had.
Your stipend is being accumulated for this project.
Yeah, with brush clearing, that's what we.
Yeah, the brush clearing is done, so, you know, that's.
Spent a million dollars on that.
Next item, our ADS-B receiver transmitter. Just to refresh everybody's memory, this is the email that came down first of October, this was from
The state, right?
Yeah, it was from Tom Peterson at Wuzdot, and he said, "Project seventy-four sixty has been submitted to the FAA OE/AAA office." Air and Article Study Number is, it's here, and apparently it's, they're gonna put an ADS-B receiver on our pilot's lounge, or maybe on the utility building, one or the other.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Receiver or transmitter?
I guess.
Receiver.
That's right, it would be two.
It's kind of a relay station, actually.
Yeah, the subject, this came for, also from Melanie Johnson at Century West, and that was so, also October first, twenty twenty-four, and the subject was ADS-B receiver post-agreement. It just says receiver, so I don't know if it transmits ADS-B out.
Well, I think it's like a relay station.
Receiver.
Yeah, the airplane transmits. You see, on flight around Hoakewell, I get the ADS-B in anyway, so.
Yeah.
Don't need it. So, well, one thing, ADS-B is not required in this airspace out here.
No, it isn't, no.
So you still have to look out the window, if you're in Seattle area, you know, in Class B airspace, then you have to have a.
But you still have to look out the window.
But yeah, you should still look out the window, because there's a definite lag in where it shows you the little triangle is, and where the airplane actually is, there's.
Oh, yeah.
There's a definite lag there.
Yeah, yeah, and the altitudes are pretty unreliable, because I know that Denise all freaked out one day, because I was, I was, she was watching me on FlightAware, I think it was, because it picks up the ADS-B, and it shows my altitude is zero, as I was over the mountains.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the altitudes are just, you can't believe it. Yeah, the, the email said, and this was from Melanie, October first, "I don't see any issues with having this equipment installed. If there is going to be an antenna that is higher than the roof line of the building, they should submit a seventy-four sixty to FAA for airspace review. I don't foresee any issues with it being approved, just needs to go through the formality." So my take on this is the wheels are turning, and pretty soon it'll be installed, it's gonna be a non-issue to us.
Yeah, good.
We won't really see anything, won't notice anything, but the FAA will be happy, and that's important.
Sure.
Okay.
Only weeknights, picking up out would make them happy.
Me too. Okay, so we did that, yeah, that's in my hangar. Okay, we did the appreciation day recap, okay, just a quick rundown of a few things here. The windsock, any issues with the sock?
No, it looks good. I'll double-check, this looks, no, it looks good.
It's still orange.
I've seen socks that were just a ring of taint.
Yes, I've changed that one here a couple times.
The airport beacon, still functional? I haven't looked at it in a while.
Uh, I don't know, I'll I'll see if I can look at it tonight. I'll see if I look at it tonight.
Camera?
Find out tonight?
No.
I was gonna say Brave Soul.
I'll be here till Saturday.
Okay, and the, the last two items, let me, let me do the last item first. Um, apron weeds. Who is in charge? Of keeping down the weeds of the apron because they don't stop growing.
Yeah, well.
Is that Public Works?
Probably.
I've been known to dig them up myself. You know? Volunteer group.
If they get too big, you know, I, I go out there maybe every couple of weeks and I just have a look. Um, they don't look too bad now, but if they, they, you know, way off in the far end where the helicopter was landed.
Yeah.
And they start to look a bit thick out there.
Well, yeah, they shovel it. I think Public Works, sounds like a good idea. Go out there with a torch, burn them off.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if it becomes a real issue, then uh, is that something that we could ask Public Works to do?
Yeah, that would go through Scott.
Okay.
Also the Public Works.
Okay.
I will have to say that Public Works is taking a lot better care of the airport in the past year than they had in the previous two years. It seems to be mowed more regularly and, and uh, I mean, in four years ago, I was mowing it. Not the whole airport, but the around the pilot's lounge and the hangars, I was mowing that three, four times in a summer. And this past year I didn't mow it once. It was always mowed, so. So they're doing a better job.
Okay, last item uh, was the PAPI uh, and the uh, pilot control lighting. Now, I know that on the PAPI, um, Bill, you showed me once how to open that box and do the bulbs.
Light bulbs, yeah.
Yeah. Does Public Works know how to do that?
I've shown one guy once.
I
So, I don't know.
That would not give me a real warm and fuzzy feeling.
Uh, you would have to ask them, um. You know, I didn't, I didn't see if they were, I didn't pay attention to them yesterday. Usually I pay attention to all that stuff when I fly in. I did turn on the pilot controlled lighting and that all worked.
Okay. Is that five clicks?
Yes. But I did not check the PAPI lighting.
Okay.
Look, I came in from the south, so it was probably I think it was working. Yeah, it was, because I remember I was way too often. I still need it.
Okay, well, I think that should be uh, another action item to Scott. For him to get a hold of Public Works and, and ask them if they know how to change those bulbs. Because we can't rely on Bill to do it.
Because after all, Bill's not reliable.
No, he's not. But, but.
It's not what I meant.
I'm gonna say that it was implied, he, he got. But uh,
No, it shouldn't be your job.
Well, I know it shouldn't be my job.
Well, it's not that it shouldn't be his job. But I could see a argument for it being our job, the board's job. And.
Yeah, we don't really need the Public Works guys going out there to look it off. All the light bulbs are turned on, you know, it's.
Yes.
It's pilots.
I think so. Okay.
Should be there.
Oh, and, and, and it's, I think we're more technically adept. Light bulb changing and PAPs.
I wonder though, Stu, if um, I mean, i- if, if, if the city could argue that it's, it, it, it's city property and just lay citizens shouldn't be touching it. I, I'm not, I'm not sure what the proper protocol is there. I would think.
It's worked out for us to touch it for how many years now?
Yeah, you know, I don't mind stepping on toes. I've always been a guy to beg forgiveness instead of ask permission first.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, I'm also the guy that I see the wind is blowing the gutter loose on the building. I'm out there with a hammer or a screw gun and I'm putting screws in it to keep from getting ripped off the rest of the way. And, you know, the, well, that's not my job. Well, I was watching coming out here, the tarp on the old fire station is one section's blown completely off the roof, another section, there's a tear and the wind is getting right under there. I'm looking at it saying, you know, the wind's going to get out and it's going to rip that tarp off and it's going to cost the city ten thousand dollars to get a new one put back on there and all, because they don't want to put a roof on.
Plus the damage, plus the damage that the, the old tarp will do is that.
As it lands on the windshield of somebody's car and, and all that other stuff. Why isn't some Public Works guy here, some city guy spun, hey, we need to nail that hole closed before the whole tarp comes off it, you know, but, so anyways, I always keep in mind that the average citizen in the city ocean shores or anywhere else for that matter, looks at a small airport as a rich man's playground. That's how they see them. They don't see it as, it doesn't do them any good. They're not going to get an airplane ride out of there. So they just have a look at them like it's a rich man's playground. And the more I can keep the cost down off the city, that there's no real budget line item for airport maintenance, twenty two thousand dollars and people come and glued about that. Make those rich guys pay for that, so.
Yeah, you're, you're right.
There's a balance here and, and.
And do we really want to have to be?
I think the city guys should know how to change those light bulbs. Clearly, am I opposed to us keeping an eye on it, getting it fixed? No.
Yeah, so Nicole, could we just have the action of Scott, just uh, have him, give him a phone call, send him a quick email? Uh, do they know how to do it? How to change the PAPI lights?
The PAPI, by the way, so for your
Precision.
Precision approach.
Pass indicator.
Indicator anyways, it's two blocks of three lights, right? Yeah, two blocks of three lights. And if you get too high, they're all yellow.
No, they're all white.
They're all white. And if you got right, right on path, they're all green.
No, you're thinking that, you're thinking of the more than a PAPI. So. We have a, do we have a VASI? We have a VASI. We don't have a PAPI.
No, we got PAPI. Those are PAPs.
Are they?
Yeah.
Anyways.
Um, oh, oh, oh.
If you're too high, they're all white. If you're too low, they're all red. And if you're just right there, it's white over red. Or white next to red.
Yeah.
White next to red, yeah.
This is, this is, this is white over.
And it gets you on the right visual path in the touchdown, the runway. Gently, right, gently, yeah. Fifty feet past the threshold.
If you look out the window and you know how to fly an airplane, we can do that.
Yeah. Okay, and the pilot control lighting is.
It's six lights, but it's three pairs of two. So as long as you have one white one and one red one out of the six, it works, okay, so.
It was actually easier back when we had the version called the VASI, which was the visual, visual approach slope indicator. That made more sense to laypeople, you know? So if you think about it that way.
Okay, and the bulbs, we have plenty of bulbs installed.
I believe so.
How often do we, does that box burn through those bulbs?
Uh, I would say we probably go through a dozen a year.
That many?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's one a month.
Well, there's probably like twenty dollars.
There's twelve lights.
There's twelve of them out there on twenty-four seven, so.
Yeah, okay.
And they're. Yeah, aren't they, aren't they a halogen bulb? So they don't last all that long.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if we get money ahead in our FAA stipend someday, we can get new ones that are LEDs, but.
I don't know if they.
That's a ways down the road.
So with the bulbs in the, in the shed, uh, Bill, Bill showed me how to change them and, and, and I could certainly do that too. But I don't have access to that, uh, that shed if, if I happen to be down there and, and, and they needed to be replaced.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, how do you get a key? You ask somebody who has a key to make them. And their security is gone. That's how security goes away. That's why, that's why businesses come through every now and then and they just change all the locks. The key, you know, because now, uh, you knocked out everybody.
Well, you and I both have all the keys.
Yeah. I think I'm, I'm sure I have a key to that. I think it's, it's this one's the matter. Sure, it's this one.
Okay, well.
Well, that's a Jeep key. I don't need a key.
That's the key to your equipment.
All right, well, I think I pretty much exhausted everything I wanted to talk about. Um.
I think you did a wonderful job. I'm glad for the update on all the AWAS and the ADS-B and see everything else out there is working.
Yeah.
And the ADS-B, as I understand it, one clarification. None of that is coming out of our budget.
So that's a WAZDOT thing.
Yes, WAZDOT thing.
Yeah, yeah. They might have a five percent match, but it's not much.
God bless WAZDOT.
Yeah. No, the um, you know, the financial administration?
No, I don't. I'll leave that to you.
Yeah, well, I'm leaving it to the city uh, and to Century West because it's pretty darn complicated.
Yeah.
Um, you know, really, I've, I, I, you know, my, my take on this group is that our primary purpose is technical advice to the city.
Either that or you could be nominated to be Attorney General.
Sure, I'll take the job. Yeah, so the finances I just leave to uh, uh, Scott and who asked in the city. Yeah. Okay, uh, does anybody?
I would like to encourage Scott to be at these meetings. He's our airport manager. I would really like to encourage him to not miss these meetings.
He wears a lot of hats.
Yep.
He's a busy guy. Okay. Shall we wrap it up?
Yeah.
Okay, Jerry, you got anything?
Uh, no, I, I've enjoyed the meeting. It was a great one. Uh, I'm good.
All right.
Stu? Good. I moved to a journey.
Second?